Okay. This is the meeting of the District Operating Committee on the 18th of August. I hang on one second, I'm walking right now. Almost there. Little technology glitch this morning. Okay. I need a motion to adopt the, I need a roll call.
Sure. Director Sampson.
Here.
Director Schmidt.
Here.
Director Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Ranji Kush and Chair Russell.
Here. Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment on the agenda?
There are none.
Roll call, please.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
And Chair Russell.
Hi. Okay, public comment.
There are none.
Okay, I will motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
And Chair Russell.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, Marin County Grand Jury report responses.
Hi, good morning, Directors. Crystal Yesman, Chief Engineer, I'm gonna present this item this morning. So, the Grand Jury came out with two reports recently where the Marin Municipal Water District was required to respond. In preparation for those response responses, we had two informational presentations to the board. The first being on dam safety program, we wanted to get the board, you know, information on our program and where we are with that. That was at the July doc, and then we had a subsequent informational item on ADUs, which was the other report. At an evening board meeting to explain our policies and ordinances surrounding ADUs. So with all of that background information in mind, today we bring to you the actual draft of the responses that are required by law. And I'm gonna go into a little bit of detail about what, how we're required to respond, the acceptable responses. And also, we can step through each of the responses if the board desires. So, let's start with the dam report. So this report was published in, on June 27th, and it's titled "Dam and Reservoir Safety: Water May Save Us, Water May Drown Us." And within that, at the conclusion of that report, there were five findings and six recommendations. And Marin Municipal Water District, along with North Marin Municipal Water District, are required to respond to all of the findings and all of the recommendations. So just to generally overview of what the acceptable responses are for findings, you, you have the response of either agree, partially disagree, or wholly disagree. And for recommendations, the, the acceptable responses are that it has been implemented, that it has not yet been implemented, that the recommendation requires further analysis, or that the recommendation will not be implemented. So, those are the acceptable responses, and within the packet of attachment number one is the draft of the memorandum that we've prepared for the board's review and consideration. And if the committee agrees, then we will, they'll refer it to a future board meeting for approval to, to delegate the general manager to submit this. And as required by Grand Jury Report Regulations, it does have to come from the Board, the elected Board of Directors, so that's why this item is before you today. So, getting into the findings for the dam report. Finding number one, climate change is increasing the atmospheric river's strength and frequency with, which impacts communities across Marin. We certainly agree with that. Failure to include and recognize these growing threats underestimates current dam safety risks and possible preventative strategies. And our response to this finding is that we partially disagree. The second sentence in there that we partially disagree because we're currently performing spillway condition and capacity assessments related to atmospheric river events to ensure that the facilities are adequately sized to accommodate the potential for larger storm events. It's our opinion that the, the finding that, that it, that it underestimates dam safety risk is yet to be determined, and that we still need to look into it further. Moving on to finding number two, Marin Water and North Marin are in full compliance with both state Division of Safety of Dams, as well as all federal regulations, however dam safety analysis and reporting would be enhanced by including current data on probable maximum precipitation. We partially agree with this, this finding. Of course, we agree that we're in full compliance, our dams have been deemed determined safe for continued use by the state of California. However, we believe that there's still more research that needs to be done on the probable maximum participation numbers and how that analysis and reporting could enhance our, our, our dam safety program. Finding number two is partially disagree. Marin and North Marin Hazard Mitigation Plans Fail to Incorporate the Latest Scientific Studies on Climate Change. They use DSOD and FEMA climate models that were last updated in 2012. There's an 11-year gap that may lead to an underestimation of current and future risks. So again, we do have a hazard mitigation plan, it was adopted in 2022. This plan has a section on climate change, and we do plan on updating the hazard mitigation plan to add the roadmap projects that were identified in the Strategic Water Supply Assessment, because with those projects on the list, they would be eligible for grant funding from FEMA. And when we do that update, we will be adding a section to the dam safety on climate change and getting the results from our spillway assessment into that, into that report. So, we do plan on updating the plan, so again, it's, it's, it's unclear whether or not that, that gap in data would underestimate the current and future risk. Fighting four, FEMA and National Flood Insurance Maps may not have entirely incorporated the most recent dam inundation maps that are not available on the Marin or North Marin websites. We partially disagree. The FEMA flood maps are maintained by the County of Marin's Flood Control District, and they are the responsible party for main, keeping those maps available for the public. So, whether or not the inundation maps that we provide on our website are necessary in the FEMA flood maps is up to the county to decide. They need to reach out to FEMA in our, in our opinion to determine whether or not they should add the flood zone from our dam inundation maps to their firm maps. But currently, those firm maps just include flood from sea level rise essentially and flood events. Finding five, the advancement of dam safety is greatly enhanced with the expertise of scientific institutions. They reign, they use a range of tools and practices such as, and I won't go into the detail, we partially disagree. They, the finding notes that these practices used by other water districts serve as an example from which Marin and North Marin can benefit. So we do use quite a bit of scientific data in our ongoing operations, and it's listed there in this section, it's quite lengthy, but we do believe that some of the, the sightings that they had in that finding, for example, FIRA is only used by Lake Mendocino, it's considered a pilot, it's not applicable to how we operate, we don't have an agreement with the Army Corps on flood control for our, our operations of our dam. So, you know, some of it's a little bit not applicable, so essentially that's how that finding, our response to that finding is written here. But we do participate in quite a bit of scientific research, and we will continue to do so. Okay, now on to the report recommendations. These are actions that are recommended by the Grand Jury for the district to, to enter into. So, the recommendation one, by March of 2024, we should establish a climate change working group. And that these should be based on the working to develop new hazard mitigation actions, and that should be based on current scientific projections regarding atmospheric rivers and other extreme participation events. Our response is that it requires further analysis. We already participate in a number of scientific groups and modeling groups and forecasting groups, so whether a, a local working group is necessary, we're still looking into that. It might be prudent, but, and so we're still deciding, we were talking recently with our partners in Marin County about participating as a group collaborative with the California Extreme Participation, or at the CW3E. This is a group out of San Diego's Scripps Institute, University of San Diego. They do modeling and forecasting for reservoir operations, and we were, we recently met with them to talk about participating as a collaborative working group. And so that might be an avenue to, to, to move forward on this recommendation, but it does require further analysis. Recommendation number two, by December of 2023, the two water districts should begin work to expand their hazard mitigation plans and, and et cetera. And so the response is that it has not yet been implemented. As I mentioned earlier, we are planning on updating our hazard mitigation plan, so that is forthcoming. Recommendation three, by January of 26, the water districts should provide the public with new information about the updated plans. This information needs to ensure that they effectively consider flood risks in light of the new science, et cetera. It has, again, not yet been implemented. So, when we finish the update of the hazard mitigation plan, we will certainly be reaching out to the public to inform them of any changes in our assumptions. Recommendation number four, by September of 23, both water districts should update their websites to include links to the FEMA maps. We did implement this, we put in a link to the Marin County Flood District's FEMA maps, we already have our inundation maps on, posted on our website, so that has been implemented. And then recommendation five, by December of 23, dam owners should provide the public with easily accessible information on flood risks as FEMA and National Flood Insurance may not have entirely incorporated the most recent dam inundation maps. Again, this has been implemented as mentioned in recommendation four response. Lastly, recommendation six, by December of 23, both water districts should begin to explore collaborations with scientific institutes to learn from, expand their toolkit, and augment their safety of their dams, et cetera. And this has not yet been implemented. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we're considering participation in the Center for Western Weather and Water Extremes, this gives us access to to participate in conferences and workshops and have a seat at the table with the UC San Diego group. And then, we also are working on, with a number of other groups there. So, we will be, as we mentioned in the findings, or the working group suggestion, we will, this will have the same timeline as we did before, has not yet been implemented. Yes, okay, so that gets me to the end of the dam memo responses. And the ADU report is much easier. That, that report was actually written towards local municipality rules towards ADUs and school districts, fire districts. The list of required agencies that need to respond is quite lengthy. It includes not only us, but sanitary districts, school districts, municipalities, fire protection districts. And in that report, there were ten findings and six recommendations, of which Marin Water is only required to respond to finding number seven and recommendation number four. So there was quite a bit more in that report that we're not responsible to respond to. And so, talking specifically in regards to the ADU responses from the Marin Municipal Water District for finding F7, which was that impact connection and capacity fees vary considerably throughout the county, and such fees can be a disincentive, a disincentive to homeowners considering ADU development. We certainly agree with that finding. And recommendation four, by December of 23, begin a feasibility assessment of waiving or significantly lowering impact and connection fees for units smaller than 750 square feet. And as you learned at the informational item at the evening board meeting, this recommendation has already been implemented. So we do have lower fees for those smaller units. So, with that, those, that is a summary of the recommended report, report responses, and I open it to any questions from the board, or from the committee.
Okay, any questions, guys?
I'm think.
Overwhelmed us.
Thank you, thank you, Crystal. I just, quick question on, on, on finding number four back on the dam safety. I'm not sure why we're partially disagreeing. Can you maybe speak to that particular response?
Oh, well, they wanted us to post the FEMA flood maps on our website, but they're actually posted. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to that, let me read this again. Okay, so adding the inundation areas into the FEMA flood maps. That's the responsibility of the Marin County Flood Control District to do that. And.
I guess I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but it, but it's still true.
If I can, I think that, I think that, the, the clause of that, that we were disagreeing with is the fact that the inundation maps are not available on the MMWD website. And they are, they are available on their site. There are a link on our website, and those are available, so we had to partially disagree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, any, um, any reason why it's gonna take until March 2024 to get our working group up and running? I, you know, I, I really do appreciate the grand juries poking us on this. No way could any of us really have anticipated the impact of climate change the way it's happening. I guess, well, maybe there, there've been, there's been a lot of fear that this was gonna happen, but just even that hurricane that's happening in Southern California now, where it's gonna dump a year's worth of rain in one storm. We, we are in a new world here, so I, I am very appreciative of the focus of the Grand Jury here. And waiting until midway through the rainy season or end of the rainy season to get that, that working group together feels like, I don't know, maybe we should try to step it up quicker, otherwise I'm supportive.
Actually, let me, this is the one recommendation that, one of the items that we have a different response than North Marin Water District. North Marin Water District determined that they disagreed, that they're not gonna implement, that it will not be implemented. So we're still looking into it, so our partner agency is very important to us in terms of establishing such a working group, so we need to work out.
But what we do plan, Crystal, right, the California, the CW3E to pursue that either through the coalition Crystal mentioned, or directly just us joining, and that's by this December. So we are planning to, and that really is a preeminent regional group broadly in California, and I think that will be an enhancement to kind of our work and our information flow.
That, that's great. So do we have a follow-up to this response of the Grand Jury? Do we plan to review this again?
Um, it, it's not required as part of the Grand Jury, but I do think it's a good idea to kind of keep the board apprised of our work with the dams and incorporate what we're noting here at our next kind of briefing to the board on our dam safety activities.
Yeah, there's definitely some investigation and some more work that we're committing to do and that we are doing, so, so we should, we should get it on the calendar. Thank you.
I would just echo Jed's comments about the importance of, of what these folks were trying to do. It's a complicated issue, and, and, and it's, and I'm glad that we're providing information back to help people understand the complexities and, and particularly what we are doing about it. I agree that we, that forming a local group may not be the most effective way to address the need, so I'm appreciative that we're gonna take some time to figure out what the right approach is, because these are issues that face, you know, all the dams, or I shouldn't say all, many of the dams that we have in California. And, and, and so being part of a regional group might help us to share in the science, also share in the development of best management practices that are consistent with a larger thought group, and also maybe participate in, in efforts to secure funding that, that could, you know, help offset any cost of any repairs or changes that we make. So I like the idea of us thinking more broadly than just local. But that we're going to look into that and come back to the board and make sure that we're, we're, we're addressing it in the right way. So, thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts? A public comment?
I have two, Mr. Roger Roberts and then Ed Jameson. Go ahead, Ms. Roberts.
I realize that the risk of overtopping of any of our dams is very low, but I'd be interested to understand what is that level of risk. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. This was a really outstandingly concise report by Ms. Yesman. Thanks.
Thank Ed. Okay. Item three.
Oh wait, we needed a refer and recommend.
Oh, okay. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Okay, now item three.
Good morning, Paul Salia, Water Resources Director. Let me share screen, we have a short presentation this morning. There we go. Okay, so I want to just kick off by introducing a couple gentlemen on either side of me. This is Tim Taylor with Corolo. Tim is the Director of Infrastructure Practice with Corolo. And he's, you know, a small amount of experience, mere 37 years, building infrastructure projects, just like the ones that we're contemplating today.
Good morning, President and Directors. As Paul said, my name is Tim Taylor. I work with Corolo Engineers, been with the company 30 years, been working on infrastructure projects for 37. Anywhere from planning, design, all the way through construction, happy to be here.
Thanks, Tim. And of course, you met Xavier Arias with Woodard and Curran on Tuesday evening. And Xavier also has a similar level of experience, and of course, Director of Engineering with a large East Bay Municipal Utility District.
Good morning, and to, to add, I suppose, to, to what Paul just said. A lot of my experience has been on the public sector, Director of Engineering at East Bay Mid, I've been with Woodard and Curran for about four years where I'm a senior technical leader. So I've been able to, to blend some of the perspective of consultant work and the breadth that comes with that, with a lot of owner perspective over the years, developing water supply projects, major transmission and treatment projects, and so on, that give me some insight into the challenges faced by the district right now.
Thanks, Xavier. And, you know, I, I don't want to embarrass these guys up here, but the, then, it's not just the sort of sheer number of years of experience that sits either side of me, which is approaching over 75 years of experience in these types of projects. But also, as Xavier and both Tim were noting, kind of directly relatable experience to the projects that we're contemplating. So enough of that for now. But our goal today is really to explain how this work that we're contemplating today is gonna build on the Strategic Water Supply Assessment. And we're gonna do that by, you know, taking a look obviously as to how we got here today, but also a life, a look at a life cycle, sort of step back a little bit. What are life cycles or state, development stages look like for these very large water supply projects? And then contemplate and consider that all projects, right, have a level of risk associated with them. And, and how does the level of preparation and work that you do change when that level of risk might change? And then Tim will walk us through the proposed sort of scope that he has developed for us, and then we'll, we'll take it to conclude with some next steps and recommendations. So, as, as you know, of course, we're contemplating a number of long-term water supply priorities. Water efficiency being chief among those, along with petaluma brackish desalination and storage, local storage enhancements. And today, we're focused on the conveyance aspects, specifically the conveyance of, you know, a Marin Sonoma Intertire project. So, the integrated roadmap that the board selected at the end of February of this year identified conveyance to storage as a priority project for us. And since that time, we've essentially been out there obtaining resources for us to move these projects forward. One of the first steps was bringing on Xavier and Woodard and Curran to assist us with program management of these storage and conveyance projects. And today, we're proposing to bring on board for your consideration is, is Corolo Engineers to help support the engineering services associated with conveyance to storage. And the conclusion of this work that we're proposing will result in a well-defined and defensible project. And what I mean by that is, is I started out talking, and we're gonna address in a moment here this notion of project risk, and all projects have a level of risk, but particularly so water supply projects that can be quite controversial. And so the level of preparation that we need to undertake is extensive in order to that not just in the realm of environmental litigation that we can defend against that appropriately, but also to make sure that we're making the right choices along the way, just in, in, in terms of supporting our public and public opinion. So I think at this point, I'm gonna pass it over to Xavier, who's gonna talk to us about a couple of these slides.
So this slide is a bird's eye view of how a major project, particularly a water supply project, might be developed. Maybe at the very highest level, it could apply to really any really large project, I mean, a, a large freeway. But there are some, some specifics about water supply projects that, that have some nuances that, that even pose additional challenges. And I, I think as, as Paul just said, it's, it's not simply a matter of trying to inoculate the district, say, against litigation. It's making sure that the decisions every step of the way make sense, that they are economical, that they, they do a prudent balancing of benefits, impacts, and costs. So, to kind of walk through the, the timeline here, we, we have completed the, the gray box, you might say, that's the strategy level. And that's the recent SWISSA study, which provided a lot of very useful foundational information. Fundamentals like the, the need for water and the quantifying of water, identification of, of options that could work either by themselves or in concert to meet that need for water. So that's a building block, and so the, the next step now is to build on that with a, a very early planning stage where we take another look at those options, we, we put them into specific projects that are aligned with that strategy that, that was outlined in the, the SWISSA study. We, we start the SEQUA-NIPA process, and we take a series of steps then that work in concert with SEQUA-NIPA. So, technical investigations that will inform that discovery of, of different impacts and benefits. And some of those impacts, of course, end up being documented in the, the SEQUA documentation, not just disclosing, but also shaping those projects, informing the selection of an alternative, and also some of the details of scope of the, of the selected alternative. That all, it really is just part of further developing and evaluating the options that have already been identified in SWISSA. In some cases, that'll mean identifying important variations or subalternatives. But a lot of it is also a narrowing, looking at the, the options that have been identified and figuring out, are, are there any that really with, with the facts in hand are, are just simply not feasible, not viable, don't meet the district's needs? So there's a screening process that goes on, and that can be very cost-effective, because the, the next step is where there's a greater investment. As we move into the green box, that'll come second. There's a, there's an additional level of analysis that, that the surviving alternative or alternatives will, will undergo. And the top bullet there, I think substantial field investigations, those can be substantial. We're talking about very big footprint projects, whether it's conveyance that we're focused on today. Several alignments, miles and miles of pipe for each alignment. We don't want to study each of those in field, with field investigations that are very detailed. in field with field investigations that are very detailed. So the screening process I talked about first is important. But it also is important, once we've, once we've narrowed it to ideally one alternative, maybe a couple, those field investigations do have to happen. They they inform our analysis of impacts, they inform our understanding of costs. And even just, even those aside, they tell us how those projects can be best executed so that we don't get surprises at a later stage. Obviously, we want to talk about, you know, is if an alternative has been determined to be fatally flawed, it's already been screened out, but it's also important to understand all the challenges for the selected alternative. So those field investigations, they're costly, but absolutely necessary, and they're foundational to the next bullet there, which is developing the preliminary design documents. Those are those are engineering drawings at the the preliminary level of detail, but usually something like approximately thirty percent designed. And that again helps you complete that sequin EBA process where there's, there can be a full disclosure then with a pretty good level of detail. Here's what it's going to look like as we as we build a preferred alternative. And also here's a full airing of of what we're not doing, the alternatives that were examined in some detail at a greater level of detail than we've done so far in the strategy work. And be able to explain convincingly because it's founded on a lot of data that will be collected. This is why this is the, this is the best option for the district and its ratepayers. And these are the impacts and the benefits that come with that choice. So that's part of what Sequa NEPA is all about is disclosing that in a very transparent way. And and then we would also be initiating permitting with all those facts in hand. If we need right-of-way easements, if we need environmental permits, encroachment permits, et cetera, that can all be informed by that 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 green box. And then the final stage, I think we'll talk about maybe in more detail at a later date. But at some point, you come up with a final design documents where you've, you have enough detail there for somebody to go build the project. So that's the, that's the very high level view. What it actually is realized as, these are the same color codes, by the way, but just showing you a little more detail, what are those steps? And I think the I won't walk through each one, but I could answer questions about them. I think the big point here is that these steps build on one another. And I didn't show all the complex relationships, and I think Tim may show us a snapshot of what he has in mind for conveyance if there are questions about that. That's been thought through carefully. He'll give us a glimpse of his work plan. These, but every step builds upon prior steps. Just as I said, at the very high level, the pre-design, it is, it's building on the work that's done in planning and the planning in turn was based on the work that's already been done at the strategy level. And so this, this is something that we've gotten, you know, Corolo has come in with their own plan, but some of the fundamentals were outlined at the very early stages of when Paul and I were talking about, well, okay, we clearly need to bring on a team to develop this project. What are the fundamental steps? Those fundamentals are there. And then what what Corolo has done is think hard about that and said, okay, we've, that generally makes sense, but we've fleshed it out a little bit. So they've, they presented that to us in in their proposal. And we find that to be a very compelling. They have a solid work plan. You might think about what level of analysis. I mean, this is a lot of steps. It takes a lot, some time and money to do these steps that I've talked about. And the the level of analysis is, is among other things, a tool for risk management. There's a lot of risks, including not just that that somebody may not like the project and could litigate. There's also just the the risk of choosing the wrong project or executing it in a very inefficient way. So starting with looking at all the alternatives, making sure we pick one that that actually meets the district needs and doesn't have surprises that we encounter in construction. That can never be precluded, but we do everything we can to minimize those risks. So the the right level of analysis is is a judgment call, but it is informed by a lot of the factors that that are faced by a big project like this, a big footprint, significant financial exposure, lots of alternatives that so that we need to be able to to understand, there will be skeptics of no matter what alternative we pick, we'll have to be able to defend all the choices that that are made as to which alternative and also the the specific description of the selected alternative. And as the second bullet alludes to, the more those the perceived impacts go up, the greater the burden on us at this point, to make sure that we have a very solid analysis to show not just the the good description of what we're doing, but also be able to explain what we're not doing, because it often it will be the case that someone might might look at the negatives because we disclose impacts of what we are doing. They might be thinking, well, this one that you're not doing, you know, from from my vantage point, looks better. I think we need to explain why it's not not being done. Because we looked at it and it either doesn't meet our needs, it's infeasible, it has greater impacts, things like that. So the final bullet here, just it talks about the the analysis that's been done. SWISSA did in fact provide a very helpful analysis. So it confirmed the need for the project and approximate sizing, et cetera, but it didn't give the level of analysis that we need for this next step. So the specific drivers, I think alluded to in the next slide here. The things we need to accomplish in this next unit of work, of course, we're building on what's been done. But we do need to come up with project-specific criteria, and that word is purposeful, project-specific. Of course, there were criteria cooked into the Swiss work where a lot of alternatives were were presented. And there were criteria applied just to basically figure out at a strategic level which ones look most promising. But once we zero in on a specific group of projects like conveyance is today's today's first item, then we look at things that are particular to to every, every option within that class of projects, for example, of a pipe that runs along one oh one or a pipe that that goes from Katati over to Suluhui. Once we're talking about a pipe and we then we zero in on on criteria that are specific to pipes and to conveyance. We also look at the the pros and cons of a very site-specific alternatives. So we're going to be be looking at a preliminary level at all the impacts and costs that come with a pipe and the pump stations and so on that might come with conveyance. So it is another level of detail beyond what you've seen, and that's, it absolutely has to be done. So we, our plan is further develop and evaluate those alternatives using again the site-specific information. It'll give us a lot more insight into costs. We'll identify important thresholds that may exist on sizing, and I think that came up earlier this week at the Tuesday meeting, and we we fully agree that's, that's one of the things you get with this next level of analysis. And I mentioned before, understanding what the impacts as well as the benefits are of the different alternatives. And this is, this is to support that Sequa NEPA process that will be running in parallel. So I think this point, Jim is going to walk us through his plan.
Great, thanks, Tom. As you know, the Strategic Water Supply Analysis identified a certain supply project, and that's conveyance, and it identified eight alternatives that could get water from point A to point B. And really, this next step is to take those eight alternatives and quickly eliminate the ones that don't meet the project goals or have limited project goal incentives and then start working into the more detailed analysis. So our work plan creates a clear path for that evaluation and fate, it's a kind of a two-stage approach. And that first stage is really to identify the project goals, the screening alternatives, and how we're going to go through the alternatives analysis and quickly work with the district to eliminate some of those alternatives that don't meet the project goals. As well as looking at key criteria for the alternatives analysis. And the alternatives analysis evaluates projects based on these key criteria. The routing analysis and confirmation, how we're going to get the pipeline and the water from point A to point B. Inner jurisdictional stakeholder coordination, constructability is a is a really important criteria, as well as cost of the actual project of that alternative and water supply benefits. And that's the interaction of what Zav is going to be doing, taking the information we feed him. And then system hydraulics in operation. That's where the dorky engine, the dorky engineer in me, you know, gets to look at the real technical, you know, how many pipe or how many pump stations, what's the pipeline diameter, you know, what's the length? As well as the environmental and permitting considerations, and that's the interaction with your consultant ESA to identify for each alternative that we're taking forward, how that is going to affect the environment. So an example of this alternatives analysis is, one example is taking water from the Katati tanks from Sonoma County Water Agency down to the Castania Pump Station. And you have a lot of challenges in those two alignments when you look at it quickly. There's, yeah, so you've along the highway one oh one corridor, you've got, you know, Sonoma County coordination, you've got the Caltrans coordination. You've got historic downtown Petaluma, one of the alternatives routes right through historic Petaluma. That's going to be a challenge. And one of the things you can't lose sight on is for these, either one of these two alternatives is as you move water to the Castania Pump Station, what happens as you inject it into your system downstream? You don't have enough storage possibly to take nine, ten MGD from Sonoma County Water Agency into your system directly. So we'd have to look at that as well. And then phase two of the of the analysis is taking three, four alternatives and really diving into the details and looking at, you know, how is it going to be constructed and really assigning numerical values to those key criteria to be able to come up with a recommended alternative or alternatives that are going to move into the the pre-design phase that Zav talked about. And an example of this is what two of the alternatives that the Strategic Water Supply Analysis looked at was taking water from Katati Tanks down to Nikasio Reservoir or Suluhui, or even both. You know, it's it's about a twenty-five mile pipeline and but the key benefit of that is you have thirty-two thousand acre feet of water storage available right now. And we're going to take those and put those key criteria on each one of those and look in closer analysis. And an example of this is actually looking at the profile in the hydraulic grade line. You know, key technical evaluations help determine the preferred alternative. And what do I mean by that? Well, if you look at the profile along the ground, you have a lot of ups and downs of existing ground. And it could take two pump stations to get the water from Katati Tanks down to Nikasio. And one of the things we have to look at is, are we going to do it in series or are we going to break head and store water? Which means the site for the pump station could potentially get bigger. So those are the kinds of discussions we have to have with with this, with the district to be able to, you know, fine tune these. The other thing you got to look at is these two alignments are out in the country roads. How are you going to get power to them? These aren't small pump stations and hooking up to PGNE is not a small task. So we got to look at those technical issues as well. And as you can see, as you come across the the high point on after that second pump station, is there possibility for energy recovery as you drop into Nikasio Reservoir, as well as using that head to potentially dumping water into Suluhui at the same time? And with that, I'll turn it over to Paul.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. This is a, from an engineer's perspective, this is a terrific geeky slide and what we live for. So sorry about that, but we had to had to include it. So I think Tim's done a good point, and I wonder if maybe this is a good point for us to stop and take questions, or if you'd like me just to run through this slide first.
I think it's a good point to stop and take the questions.
Okay.
Any question? Well, I have several. So I'll just start on mine. Obviously, we're looking forward to the project. I'm very curious about how the diameter of the pipeline is going to be determined. Assuming that it's only used for winter water. It seems to me that that issue is pretty critical of what the logic is behind siding on the diameter. I'm wondering if we couldn't just push harder through the existing aqueduct pump through it like we're doing with the Castania Pump Station, only have another one upstream as opposed to putting in a new pipeline. And I think that we should make a criterion to stay away from one oh one and the one oh one corridor as much as possible because that particular routing has been so disturbed for almost as long as I can remember with the, the Nevada Narrows and all the different work that's been going on. So those are my first thoughts. And like I say, we're looking forward to this. I do have a couple of mechanical thoughts. I was a little surprised to see the twenty-four rates listed here. Is that a guarantee? I mean, I don't know how you could know today what your rates are going to be in twenty-four without knowing the inflation for the year. So is that just, you're saying it won't be higher than this? And the second area in cost is the two tasks for the surveyor, the ODCs. Are they going to do like photogrammetric work or are they going to do out in the field surveying, route surveying for the pipeline? And why are there two sessions? And could you just briefly touch that?
So Director Russell, let's start with your first question of the twenty twenty-four rates. You know, we've made an assumption on inflation. I mean, there's only, what, there's five months left in twenty twenty-three, and so we've made an assumption on the increase of our rates and we will hold those. I mean, that's, you know, our, our promise to you is as a district. So I don't have a concern about that. And then your, your second question about the surveyor. Really, what, at this point in time, because of the fact that we're not going to, we don't know what the preferred alternative is, we're going to be using, he's going to be doing research on utilizing existing information from the internet like LIDAR from Sonoma County for topography, and that's actually how we came up with this alignment. So he's going to fine tune that for us and as well as doing property research as, you know, a couple of the alignments cross private properties. So he's going to be helping us on that side of the of the story. Oh, pipe diameter. Yeah. So really, when we looked at at sizing this alternative, just from a proposal standpoint, we made some assumptions and those assumptions are, how much water are you going to take and what's the time span you're going to take it in? And we're going to optimize that in discussions with the district on when that timeframe is that you're going to take the water, because that's going to determine the flow rate as well as dictate what the diameter is, and we're going to be optimizing that diameter. But this was just a a quick analysis that we did based on what we knew when we made the the proposal.
And then I think Director Russell, you had a question about can we pump harder in existing pipelines versus a new pipe? I don't know if you want to comment on that, Tim.
I guess I would have to understand how the existing pipeline was designed in terms of pressure rating. You start exceeding that pressure rating, obviously your heads go up. And you could start blowing apart the pipe depending on how it was designed and how it was constructed. Doesn't mean you can't do it, but there are limits.
I don't think that's the issue is energy more than blowing up the pipeline. Obviously, we wouldn't plan to overpressure the pipelines. But, you know, it's still cylinder pipe. It's pretty strong. And and the last part, Paul, is the one oh one right away. As I said, I think that is, that is a really touchy area, at least in my mind. It may not be in the public's mind, but I can't imagine it's not.
I missed some of that, Director Russell. Was that the routing down one oh one question? Yeah. And we'll be, you know, in the alternatives analysis and the screening, we'll be looking at all of these questions and those, those will be factors that go through our minds as we look at that. Hey, Paul, I just, I am super appreciative of this.
Hey, Paul, I just, I'm, I am super appreciative that this project is moving forward with more detailed analysis. I love your, your geeky engineering slide here, more the better as far as I'm concerned. It really does show how difficult it is to, to pump this water. I, I do have a couple, a couple of questions and one point. One is I'm, I'm curious about what sort of regional partnerships we would need to engage in in order to accomplish this? And whether it's Sonoma and North Marin, you know, how do we want to think about how to effectively work with our, with our neighbors and, and the benefits for them potentially? And, and then I, I do think that we have heard from the landowners in and around the Suluhui Reservoir repeatedly about their concerns. And I know it's not that many people, but there, but there, there are constituents, there are customers and they're important to us. And I, I feel like a lot of their angst is out of the lack of information. And when there's a lack of information, there grows a lack of trust. And so I would encourage us to engage with them in, in a way that brings them into the thought process earlier than later. And, and help understand alternatives and ideas. They live there. I'm sure they have some ideas about what we can and can't do. And, and, and maybe some of their angst might not be warranted, or I know it's early, but I, I do think that engagement will be important as we think about what, what other alternatives there are to store. And, and, and as I mentioned in the last presentation a few days ago, I really am interested in other areas and other places that we can store this water as well. Rather than having to pump it all the way down there. But thank you for this. I'm excited about the next step.
It's just quickly in terms of regional partnerships, and I'll invite Ben to, to color in between the lines and maybe Xavier as well. Of course, our partners to the north, Sonoma, are aware of our plans at the moment. And, and our strategic plan is, is no secret, obviously. And you know, all of the contractors will, will be made aware and given the opportunity to, to work with us. But beyond our partnerships, there are also agencies in West Marin that we've had engagement with already. So we've invited them to, to discuss different water supply issues and how we can help each other. So everyone from, you know, Bellinas to Muir Beach to Point Reyes Station in Vernass. So we are trying our best to, to reach out and include everyone that could potentially benefit from this type of important water supply project regionally. And then.
And I'd love, I really love more details about that, Paul. That's my instinct, but I'd love to understand what those benefits are.
Okay.
If I could add, I, I think that there clearly are regional benefits that are likely to vary among the alternatives. You know, some obvious benefits, for example, if some of the alignments would provide redundancy to existing infrastructure and therefore greater reliability. But I, maybe less obvious is that, that almost any of these projects by allowing Marin to take water off peak essentially frees up capacity, provides overall resilience to the, to the region. So there, there may well be benefits to, to all of the alternatives. And we just have to look at that more closely as we go forward.
That, that's great.
Paul, just one, one comment, I guess, but one, this is exciting to see the team come together. And hopefully this is going to be the, the team that carries us through for a while. So Tim, welcome as well, and thank you for, for helping out. And when we look at these, these conveyance, and I think it's going to be overall overarching theme for me for all the projects, but with conveyance as well as increasing redundancy and reducing single points of failure in our system as we look at alternatives. I think that should be value engineered into this project because as we saw in the winter time, PG&E suffer that fate when they put their pipes right together or if something happens to the Castania Pump Station, is that going to limit us for what we're doing? I think when we look at these projects, making sure that they're providing other benefits, should something else not work as well as it's designed, would be appreciated.
Yep. Thanks for the comment.
A couple of comments and a couple of questions. Just to tie off what Matt just said, I think that we've had a lot of conversations recently about risk. And I think this is a great opportunity to, to make sure that we're really giving thought now about redundant conveyance so that we do have, that we have a way of addressing the, the unexpected. Cause it seems to be the norm these days, climate wise. To Director Russell's point about looking at our existing conveyance and how we can maximize that. I think that would be, it'd be really great to just hear back on that. Cause it's hard not to think that, that, that if there's a way for us to maximize what we already have deeply invested in, if we can just increase the conveyance capacity of the existing line through greater pump pressure without, of course, damaging the system or something. That would be great to know that we've looked at that. Cause I suspect that that might, you know, if it was possible, it might be one of the more cost effective ways, you know, into cost per yield. I want to, going to the, a fundamental question I have, and I, and this is my first question is how conveyance and the yield associated with the cost and yield of that conveyance is highly dependent on the storage on the backend? I know we're looking at different options for potentially expanding our storage, but we don't, we're not there yet. We don't know what the, what the most cost effective alternatives would be. So how will you be addressing, considering different alternatives? Given that we, we have what, we have our current existing storage. Of course, any conveyance alternative could just, you know, be, be based on what our current storage is. But are you trying to factor in also what might be future expanded storage? Do you speak to how you're addressing it? Cause I think that gets into like, how big of a diameter of a pipe depends on how much water you're moving to how much storage.
So Xavier will fill in some of the details. But you know, if you remember from Tuesday evening, we, we talked about each of these projects having independent utility. So conveyance by itself has a benefit to us and we'll be able to quantify that using modeling. And then in combination in concert with storage, we'll be able to understand how that changes or if it indeed changes and whether there's some kind of symbiotic relationship between conveyance and storage.
Sure. To, to kind of build on that a little bit, we, we do plan to model, first of all, your existing system. And, and we talked about optimizing operations of the existing system. And then, and then we, then we'll model individual elements, for example, conveyance and, and model. Well, what does that do for you at different capacities? And that also will help us figure out things like the diameter of the pipe and the optimizing pumps and energy use and so on. And that's with, with regard to say to conveyance, or we can look at storage also in isolation or in concert with that conveyance. So, so for example, in increasing one of the, the lakes, like whether Nikasio, Suluhui or Kent, adding storage there might have some value by itself. Building a pipe has some value by itself and we can quantify each of those. And then we can start looking at interesting combinations and that is the plan. Cause there, there may well be synergistic benefits by combining these options together. But as, as Paul mentioned, we anticipate they also have independent utility. And they, they may well have, have different timelines reasonably to get them developed. So it's important that, you know, we, we understand what those independent benefits of a project may be and, and figure out, yeah, could it, should be planned for a future project that would be complimentary? But, but ideally we'll be able to figure out what those, those, that independent utility is and make a choice that is one that makes sense no matter what and has some flexibility to deal with future choices.
Thank you. That's helpful to kind of get a sense of how you're seeing the benefits of the analysis under a number of different scenarios. I think that from my perspective, I mean, I'm, I'm excited that we're, we're moving forward. And this is a really important part. I think we recognize that conveyance is going to have utility and benefit for a variety of scenarios, even if we don't do any expansion of storage whatsoever. But you know, my, my primary concern is making sure that we are being fast and efficient with our, our dollars. And so, you know, in a more perfect world, if we had a, already an analysis of ability to, to increase storage to pair with this, you would be able to probably winnow out certain scenarios more quickly in, in the work that you're doing. But cause it's going in parallel, I think everything stays on the table until you, you have some other reason to take it off. I'm just concerned that that might be less efficient, but I think we need to run in parallel. So I just hope that there's something built into your guys' process where things that are not panning out are quickly dropped off the table. Just in the name of being more efficient to focus on the things that look like a, a higher cost or a higher yield per cost. Going to the, the conversation about regional partnerships, this just strikes me as a really important opportunity for, for not only for Marin, but, but for the region. And, and, and I think that's important from, you know, the, where the water would come from. So if it's from Sonoma, I think there's obviously this, whatever we're doing needs to be in partnership with them as a supplier. The flip side is obviously there are a lot of other communities around here that are recognizing the same need for increased conveyance. So what we're doing is obviously a benefit to other water districts. And I'm wondering to what extent we have reached out to not only coordinate in terms of, of the analysis, but also cost sharing in, in, in the analysis itself, because it will have utility for others. So I, I think I'm glad we're doing it. I don't want us to slow down to not do it because of, you know, the urgency of this. But at the same time, I, I think the regional partnership, the regional benefits and the cost sharing would be beneficial to you.
I'll just weigh in briefly. In terms of the regional, a fair amount of talk. And I, I think it is a very significant issue and opportunity for this project. In that, as we all know, kind of thinking regionally is the right thing to think about our neighboring agencies and their needs and the opportunities. It also, of course, builds stakeholder support, which is needed for a project like this. And lastly, as you noted, funding perhaps directly from the agencies that benefit, that co-benefit, as well as grantors like to see a regional effort and you're more likely to be successful. So I do think it is a very key question and issue and it's at the forefront of our minds. And we'll continue efforts to talk to the regional partners, which as Paul noted, included West Marin Agencies, directly North Marin, Petaluma, because this is the area we're talking about, as well as of course, Sonoma Water and the other contractors. And there's various ways they may all benefit and we'll be really focused on that. I did want to touch on pipe size, because.
Before you go on, on from there, before we get into pipe size, because I'm excited about that too. But in, in terms of, you know, when, when would you bring, when are the, those other potential partner agencies going to be brought into the process? Because I think to some degree, the, the way that we pursue an analysis or look at, at different routes, they may be, they, they may have in their own minds, wow, well, if you move this alignment over here, that would be more, that would be more beneficial for us. We might, that might actually make a project that doesn't otherwise exist. It's, I, I, again, coordination takes time and I don't want to slow things down. But I think even if they're able to weigh in and say, you know, if you want to have some influence on, on the scope of how we're approaching this. I, I think it's just worthwhile of just checking, even if they're like, that looks fine to us or hear some comments. And maybe it's, it turns into like, wow, if you guys are really doing that, we would, we would like to partner in that. And maybe they are paying for a, a separate related scope of work that brings their system in. But the more, I think, again, we are encouraging them to do similar looks at conveyance as a part of a regional partnership, I think is, is timely.
Yeah, it's great thoughts and we'll be bringing more back to the board specifically talking about the regional opportunities and the different partners and our thinking on timing and methods. It's already begun and what we'll update the board as well as layout where we think we need to go and get feedback on that.
Okay, please do. I, I think this is like a one, something of interest to all the board members. The, the, the idea of regional partnerships and the belief in the power of them. And so I think much like we love to see geeky, you know, diagrams that explain why it's hard to move water around. We also really like hearing about our regional partnerships.
Absolutely. And on pipe size, I, I won't think I can back of the envelope, all the work that's going to go into it. But just to note that that is an area, right? The concept of this project is winter water in times of shortage. So it's about, right, having the ability to take the water when it's available. So there's going to be a lot of discussion on sizing and costs, right? It's, it's kind of a risk-based consideration that the board's going to be hearing a lot more about. Cause you know, the size, the bigger is better. Well, there's a breakpoint, you know, in a, a curve and we'll be talking about that. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on the comment on the Suluhui neighbors. And I do think it's time for staff to engage them and go out there and meet with them and talk about and develop a frequency of updates and kind of move past, you know, they have to monitor our agendas to, to, to get information and really develop a forum and engagement with them. And we'll be doing that going forward with a kickoff fairly shortly.
I'm glad to hear that. And I, I think that I can imagine how stressful it is for people to know that is out there is the possibility of inundating your, your farmland and your homes. And, and, and depending on the, depending on the scale or scope of any increase out there. And I just think that's, that is worthy of, of connecting with folks. And I would be happy to, to, to attend a meeting out there with the landowners who've, who've reached out to myself and I know to other board members. So I think that would be, that's really, I'm glad to hear that we're going to do that.
Okay. I, I think it's premature, as you said, Monty, I agree with you completely, that it's premature to assume any expansion of Suluhui. First, we need to get enough water in there to match its current capacity. And I think that is the way this will be looked at. And then if it's really advantageous to do something with the dam, that's a whole different subject matter. But I, I think you're right on there. We need to stay focused on, on the part we can achieve. Any other questions from the board?
Just because I'm so fascinated by this topic, just add one, one more thought about this is the winter water issue. I'm, I'm aware that the, that there's been recent executive orders by the governor around the availability of flood, designated floodwaters. I know that there's also a lot of projects that are look, being looked at in the Alexander Valley and elsewhere to look at, at flood recharge projects. Our assumptions about the availability of surplus water, I think, need to be looked at carefully. Just recognizing how, how much of those, how much of that water are we relying upon? Is, is Sonoma's water that they are, that they have a right to first? Cause others might be coming to look at what is unclaimed or available winter water to augment supplies locally and elsewhere. So I think our assumptions about that are really important for us to understand not only what's available today, but what is likely to be available into the future. Because we are looking at a, you know, a very decades-long, you know, window of obviously assumed benefit.
Okay, last slide. We presented. Okay. I'll, I'll just wrap up, Director Chair, and then we can take public comments. So conveyance to storage is clearly a key element of our integrated roadmaps, water supply. And we, we've talked about today how our analysis of alternatives for this type of project really do need to make sure that we get it right. And that it's, it's robust and defensible before we select the preferred alternative. Corolla engineers have the necessary experience, technical ability. And, and you know, missing from here on a project like these is determination to get this work carried out. And I, I would add that, you know, Corolla was responsible for bringing us the bid and plan documents for the emergency intertie in very difficult conditions. And in fact, a team member of that team is also Xavier as well. So we kind of have a very strong team to deliver this work. And so staffer are seeking for this item to be referred to the board for consideration for the general manager to, to negotiate and finalize professional services agreement.
Thank you, Paul. Any other board comment?
I mean.
Public comment.
I, I think that the, the, the consultant sounds great, looks great to me. I just, with it, with any project like this, it'd be good to show us like the alternatives. Did you reach out to lots of different consultants? Is it, did you only reach out to these guys? Cause you think they're great? Just help, help us just understand your process.
There were two some metals. There was a two semitals.
A consultant selection process that we went through where we identified five or six different consulting teams. And we reached out directly to them, asking them to respond to, to our proposal, request for proposals. And I would just want to maybe mention anecdotally that, you know, an agency of our size, when, when we go out for consulting. when when we go out for consulting agreements like this, it's a, it's a obviously an unusual in terms of the size of the project for us. And it's it's, you know, consulting firms need to allocate their resources carefully when they're responding to these types of of projects. And it's not just, you know, this mad rush for folks to respond. They do need to make business case decisions as to what they respond to. And as Chair Russell was alluding out of the the five or six that we reached out to, who are, you know, are well known in this in this area of expertise. We had two very large and competent firms, Corolla, of course, here today, and Stantec as well. And the selection committee was comprised of district staff, engineering planning manager, engineering design manager, our quality manager, myself, and a water resources engineer, along with Woodard and Curran, assisting, kind of advising that team along the selection process. And as I say, it's Corolla is here today because that 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 committee felt that Corolla responded to the RFP and had the best project understanding and giving us the best chance of success as we move forward. So that was our our process. Thanks for the question.
Yeah, of course. And I don't know if it's appropriate for board members to be a part of it, but I I would imagine Larry Russell would be as qualified as anyone. Was he was he involved in that thought process and bidding process and choice?
No, it's not 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 typical for for directors to be involved in that.
Larry, you're good with the with the options and process?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay, um, public comment?
Yes, we have a few. Mr. Roger Roberts and Phil Soder first, and Larry Minnikes.
One of the things that we mustn't forget is the easement and land costs associated with all the options. And I think that needs to be included in in the analysis project by project choice that's being offered. The land costs are associated with inundation costs as well as costs of getting right of ways. And we need to make sure that that's included in the total cost analysis for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Phil Soder, then Mr. Larry Minnikes.
Yes, thank you. As I followed this process over the past year, two underlying assumptions seem to be that one, all sources of water are universally high quality, and two, that all district customers use water in the same way. I think we're beginning to conclude that segmentation is appropriate. For me, the two important segments are that are key are the source water, potable versus non potable and high quality versus low quality. Issues like forever chemicals and algal blooms in the bay water could possibly eliminate some of these sources from consideration early sooner rather than later. As President Schmidt said, and or should we eliminate some sources of potable water because of quality? The second segment is users themselves. There's potable versus non potable use, indoor versus outdoor. I think on average, forty percent of our outdoor user usage for the average is outdoor for the average user, but it's much higher for some users. Should we segment according to average users versus super users? And that leads us into considerations of geography, since super users seem to cluster in high geographic areas. To me, the inner tie seems safe. From what we know, it's high quality water for potable use. Increased storage seems safe because the water comes from the district watershed, although that has serious implications for landowners. Conservation or demand management, I think, is safe in every respect. But some other sources are throwing up red flags. PFAs and algal blooms in in bay water make really causes to step back from considering these sources. And then finally, what about changes over time? Do we design today on the assumption that forty percent of our residential water use is going to continue to be you know, outdoor use is going to continue to be forty percent? Or do we assume that we might be able to manage that use and and reduce that amount of usage and increase our need for potable water and reduce our need for non potable water? I realize these questions increase complexity at the beginning of the process, but I think it will definitely reduce complexity as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larry Minnikes, and then Ed Jamison, please.
Yes, good morning, all. A few things. First, on the on the presentation, when we have abbreviated terms, which we all know here, like R O W, which is right of way, or S W S A, which is strategic water supply assessment. It's very common here, but if someone on the outside is looking, they may scratch their head, and we may lose them along the way. So I'd suggest little keys on those pages when those come up, very simple. There's a nine twenty three, there's a September twenty, September twenty third site visit, or maybe I meant September site visit. And what I'd like to know, if this would be open to the public or open to stakeholder groups, it's on the timeline on the very last slide that wasn't shown. One thing that's not being discussed is what are the relative greenhouse gas and carbon impacts of each of these alternatives? And I think that has to be part of this calculation, you know, which are going to be in the long term more or less energy intensive. And there's a slide, the work plan creates a clear path for evaluation with interim briefings, and I think it would help to have some clarity there of those would be operations committee meetings, or those would be held in board meetings in the future. And as Director Sampson said, redundancy is important. However, speaking to Larry Russell's comment earlier, would it make sense to consider replacing the existing pipeline with a larger diameter pipeline as one of the alternatives? Then is there confidence that the May seventh, twenty twenty four board presentation, nine months from now? If that date can be met, is it aligned for the unforeseen in the process? And what could the public consider the margin of error of that isn't met? Should we consider maybe four, six, twelve weeks as as a allowing for for the unforeseen? And it's not to put anyone on the spot, but we just want to make sure that the goal isn't the date. And as as Paul said, that we all just want to get it right, and that's the key. So I just wanted to make these comments so that we're not focused on us. It it's good that we're looking at at next May for this. We hope we hit it, but that shouldn't be the overriding goal on all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ed Jamison, please.
Yes, thanks. The Swiss process had Jacobs concluding that we only need eighty five hundred acre feet per year of new supply. But that estimate had several obvious errors. We need significantly more than that, and it's important that this project not limit our assumed need to only eighty five hundred acre feet annually. I believe we need fifteen thousand or twenty thousand acre feet annually, less whatever savings we might get from stream release automation of at most three thousand acre feet annually. Thanks.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, well, thank you all for your comments. With that, can I get a motion to refer this to the board? Okay, well, I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you all.